The City of Dunellen, special city council meeting. It's March 28th, 2022. Please make note, it is 5:35. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to start us off with a short prayer or some words of inspiration? Okay, Councilman Williams?
Councilman Williams will be very glad. I've been waiting for this moment. Father God, we come to you to give you thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us, because we know that all things belong to you. We pray, God, for knowledge, we pray for wisdom, we pray for understanding. In Jesus' name we pray. We know that we can do nothing without you. Thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Everyone have a seat. Okay, Ms. Odom, we are ready for roll call.
Mayor White?
Present.
Vice Mayor Handchar is actually absent. She was going to attempt to join us by zoom, but it doesn't look like she's in yet. She had a last-minute family emergency that she had to go out of town for. Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny?
Here.
Councilwoman Cabbage?
Present.
Troy Slaughter, Public Works Manager?
Here.
Dan Smith is absent. Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager?
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Clerk?
Here.
Julie Donowski, Records Clerk?
Here.
Chief McQuaid?
He's in the park.
Okay, thank you. Lieutenant Yawkes?
Here.
And Attorney Hand is attending by zoom. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall bulletin board, on Monday, March 21st, 2022, and amended on March 22nd to add Agenda Item Number One.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. Next thing, looking at the agenda, council, does any council member want to make a comment on tonight's agenda before we get started? Okay, please note, council has no comment on tonight's agenda. Now we open it up to public comments as we always do. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to any topic of your choosing that is not on tonight's agenda. It's your opportunity to bring forth new ideas, old ideas, suggestions, whatever you would like to do, this is your opportunity. Ms. Odom, has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone sitting in attendance that would like to take this opportunity to address council about any subject that is not on the agenda? Gentlemen, this is, I believe this is your opportunity. Please, yes, please come up to the microphone there, the podium, and give us your name and address. Please speak loudly, and this is recorded, and there's people listening on Zoom, all over the nation, so you're under pressure. No, not really.
I've been there a lot less, a lot more pressure than that. My name is James Hughes. I'm the Wishful Master at English Lodge, Masonic Lodge, Masons. We currently acquired Dunellen Lodge over here at 20751 Powell Road. Our lodge last two weeks has voted to sell that building over there, and we would like to give Dunellen the opportunity, if they would like to purchase that building for your new, for our place department. We have the blueprints, we have the paperwork, if you'd like to have it, look at it, but we'd like to bring it up to Dunellen and see if y'all would be interested in it.
Very good.
Sir, what was the address again?
20751 Powell Road. Right next to that little white church right there. Does anybody know what a Mason is?
Yes.
I hope there's one, yes.
Thank you.
So let's just ask you a couple just preliminary questions. This is the first time it's coming in front of council. So you have a building, a current building that's there on a lot?
Yes, sir.
Correct. So the first things that council would ask is what is the size of the building, and how much parking do you have attached to the building?
Well, we got 5,580 square feet of building space for the kitchen, lodge room, men and women's restroom, storage, building out back, and we got storage inside the building and attached to the dining room kitchen area, which is a full kitchen. We have another room that is attached to it. And the parking space, it can accommodate four to five handicap parking spots up front, and it can accommodate 20 to 25 in the back.
And how old approximately is the building, would you say?
The building was built in?
2000.
2002.
No, 2000.
2000, I'm sorry.
And has your association come up with a price that they're willing to put it on the market for?
Yes, sir, we have, $500,000.
Okay, council, I've asked some of the basic questions. If Ms. Kenny or Ms. Williams, Ms. Cabbage, if you have any questions?
I have one question. The parking lot you referred to, it's unknown to me, is it paved or not paved?
Not paved. The front has got a little pave there, but the back is grassy, but when we hold meetings there before we shut it down, we park back there. And it does have city water and sewer.
I've been in that building, but it's been a while now, but they had a wedding reception there, and to me, it didn't appear to be that large on the inside. That's just me, it's been, I haven't been there in a while.
We'd be more than happy for anyone to go over and take a look at it. We'll be glad to open it up and give you a tour inside of it. You can just, I can leave you my name and phone number, my secretary, I'll leave you his name and phone number, and either one of us can go there and open the building up.
Ms. Kenny?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
To the police department?
Yes.
Chief, have y'all been in that building before?
Yes, I have, but I'm...
Okay, all right, I just wanted to ask, okay.
All right. Ms. Kenny?
I appreciate anyone coming forward and giving us a suggestion, but what we have learned, because this has been a very long and arduous process for us, is we would require our due diligence, and it does take some time.
Is the property currently listed with a realtor?
No, sir, we have three realtors that's looking at it, we're holding them off. I gotta have my meeting tonight with my lodge members, and I'm gonna suggest that we hold off until our next state of communication meeting, which will be in two weeks from today. So I'm gonna hold them off until y'all have, if y'all wanna, if you're interested and have time to think about it.
Probably the way this would work is council's hearing this now for the first time. So after we discuss this a little bit, I have a feeling council will direct staff to look into it and then come back to council with a report and feasibility of it, time-wise, so you know what you're dealing with. Our next council meeting is in April, Ms. Odom?
Workshop is April 6th.
April 6th? So staff would have, if they could, and then we have another time-wise, and then we have a meeting five days later on the 11th. So whether it's the 11th or the 6th, we would ask staff to investigate it. Ms. Sid, our public planner, would look at it and see the feasibility. So we would need that amount of time just to see if it fits what we're looking at, and then based on their recommendation, council would decide whether it's worthwhile pursuing it or not.
Sure, absolutely, I agree. My lodge tonight, we're gonna discuss, we're gonna talk about Dunellen and the realtors, and I'm pretty sure a lot of the lodge members over there would like to wait until y'all give us a response. There's no real big hurry in us selling it. Like I said, we got some stuff in there, we still gotta move out. We got another weekend or two to move stuff out of the lodge area.
I have another question. What's your name again? I'm sorry, I just wanted to get his name.
Ms. Williams, go ahead.
You go ahead.
What's your name again?
James Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S.
H-U-G-H-E-S.
And I'm the Wishful Master at English Lodge 324.
In English?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Cabbage, did you have a question?
Do you know what the assessed tax value is at this time?
We pay no taxes over there. For being a nonprofit organization, we don't pay taxes.
Okay.
Ms. Kenny, anything else?
No, I appreciate it coming forward and giving us an opportunity.
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
We appreciate it. So, Ms. Council, is it okay to direct staff to look into it and give us a report at our April workshop or meeting?
So when you mean staff, are you talking about the police department?
No, staff.
Or are you talking about this staff?
This staff, no.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Odom, based on what the timelines and whatever you can and can't do, council would love a report and a recommendation of the feasibility at one of those two upcoming meetings?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Odom, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Everybody has had their opportunity to go to Agenda Item Number One. It's Agreement Number 2022-09, Contract for the Sale and Purchase of the Surplus Property Located at 11808 North Ohio Street, Bid 2021-02. I'm gonna turn this over to our city attorney, Andrew, to give a description of what this is all about. Andrew, are you hooked on?
Yes, sir, can you hear me well? Okay, great. This is a commercial contract for the Twin Property Investments LLC purchase of the church property. You'll see in here, the contract is very similar to the first contract that was received. Some of the areas are requiring indemnification and so forth that I referenced have been crossed out. Everything that needs to be in this one is here except there's a $10,000 deposit that will be held in escrow upon signing, and there's another $50,000 deposit to be made at some point, but that is not indicated in the contract. And so that just needs to be made on lines either 15 through 17, or 18 through 20, most likely at the completion of due diligence period, which is 30 days. So I was just recommending checking that box on 16 and adding the $50,000 deposit. Other than that, the contract is ready to go. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Andrew, let me just clarify. So on page one, under number two, purchase price, line 16, saying check that box and leave it blank, because it's three days if left blank.
Three days is fine, I just wanna have a date in there that the next deposit will be made. So three days is fine, the 16 can be checked, and then the $50,000 balance can be placed on line 17.
On line 17, you're saying $50,000?
Yes, just where that little dollar sign is on the side.
Okay, Van, do you have anything to speak to where that's concerned? Because we are currently holding a $10,000 check, just so you know that.
My name is Van Aiken. My address is 615 East Silver Springs Boulevard, Ocala. There was never any discussion of an additional deposit of $50,000 at the end of the inspection period. The $10,000 was the initial deposit that they have tendered a check to you that would be deposited upon acceptance of the contract. There was never a provision for an additional $50,000 deposit in any of the offers that had been given to you. They're willing, they've got a bank approval letter, they've done some inspections, they'll finish up with that, there's no issue, I don't believe it's necessary for an additional $50,000 deposit to be deposited after the inspection, because after the inspection, we're gonna go ahead and close it.
Mandy, that's absolutely fine. If under F, that's just indicating the balance of cash to close is $60,000, that's where that was coming from. It said 60, you might not have come over clearly over the microphone, but if that's just gonna be the balance at the end, then that's fine too. I just wanted to make sure that that was the case, given that there was a question on that earlier today.
Okay, I think what Andrew's referring to is if you look at line 23F, says all deposits will be credited to the purchase price at closing, and that is listed at 60,000, so it indicates that there would be a total of a $60,000 deposit. Do you see that, Van?
I read it as the balance to close, subject to, to be paid via wire transfer, and it comes across at 60,000. It's just saying that the deposits would be credited toward the purchase price at closing, but it's really, I read it to be, and this is the way I've always interpreted it, that the balance to close, subject to adjustments and progress to be paid via wire transfer, and that's what I always thought was the balance to close, was 60,000.
Okay.
Yes, and that's the way that it's currently written. I just had a question today whether there was gonna be a second deposit, and that was perhaps my misunderstanding based on conversation. So if there is not going to be a second deposit, then no changes need to be made, and the contract is ready for execution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
So, Mr. King, is that to your satisfaction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manny, while we're on the topic, we have to do whatever it takes to get better audio. I can barely under, I can't hardly understand what Andrew's saying.
Me either.
So, I mean, we have, we have to be able to communicate better. This is inadequate for council to listen to comments. My hearing is not perfect, but my hearing is good enough, and I cannot figure out half of what he was saying. Okay, so we're good? All right. All right, let's take a look. Do we have any comment by the public at this time before it goes back in front of council for discussion? What this is, is we're talking about the real estate contract that is being offered for the sale of the Soul Harbor Church, and the other particulars that go with it. Any comment from the public? Anything on Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay. So we're on item number two, Ms. Odom?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, we're still on number one. We need to get a motion on that.
Right, okay. Do we have a motion? A motion for AGR 2022-09, Contract for Sale and Purchase of Surplus Property Located at 11808 North Ohio Street, Bid 2021-2. Do we have a motion?
I move...
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, 4-0. Please make note that Vice Mayor Handchar is not part of the vote. Okay, Ms. Odom, I think you go to a public hearing statement now.
Yes. All persons wishing to address the city council will be asked to limit their comments to the specific subject being addressed. Public opinions and input are valued by the council. However, it is requested that comments are directed at specific issues rather than personal comments directed toward the council members or staff in order to foster mutual respect between council members and the public. Members of the public in attendance at public forums should listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions before the body and focus on the business at hand. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body, or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. Members of the public addressing city council and boards or commissions on a specific project or proposal are requested to disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business, professional, or financial interest with any individual, group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Members of the public should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process.
Very good. Again, this is an opportunity for the public to make additional comment before this goes to council for additional approval. Please note, no public comment?
We will take public comment during the public hearing.
During the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, gotcha. So, we're at Agenda Item Number Two. It is now 6:57.
5:50.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And I closed the regular meeting and opened the public hearing to discuss Ordinance 2022-02, amending Section 46-78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City. Then I want to clarify the prohibition of by commercial uses within Blue Run Park. The ordinance was posted on the city website on March 3rd and advertised in the river, with the annual palace star banner. I think at this point, Andrew, you may comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to. I can hear you all loud and clear. I know there may be some issues hearing me, so I'll try to speak up and speak slowly. I don't have much to say about this particular item. This is the third time that council has seen it. There have been no changes to the substance of the ordinance, exactly the same as council last reviewed it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right. Here again, now we're at public comment. If anyone wants to make a public comment on this, it's your opportunity now. Yes. Mr. Bibber? This is a comment related to Agenda Item Number Two, correct?
Bill Bibber, 9552 Southwest 192 Court, Road Dunellen. My comment, public comment is to thank the council for staying with us. It's been a long ride. Mr. Mayor, thank you for staying with us. It's a long time from 2008 when we promised we would have signs up and we would have an ordinance for Blue Run Park, and I think now we have one. Thank you, Andrew, for staying with this project, because it was a lot of your time too, which I appreciate. Also, the council's probably seen this, the sign that has been approved by council, I think, and by Mandy, these signs are gonna be gone up as soon as we receive them, they've been ordered by Mandy, and thank you, Mandy, for staying with us. We went back and forth, and Michelle, about five times in 15 minutes, I think, to get these signs. So we're gonna have a nice sign, we're gonna have them posted in the park, people gotta know what the rules are. And the next step, Mr. Mayor, as we've talked about, is we need to get enforcement, which we weren't able to do the last, you know, 10 years, but hopefully now we'll be able to get a plan for enforcement, and we'll be able to, maybe whole, and we'll be able to enforce the no commercial use rule, which is gonna be great. So it's a, it's a big step for the city, and I appreciate the cooperation that I've received and the patience for me getting up here so many times, but thank you, everybody.
Do you have a different sign from what I saw today, this morning? Do you have a different sign?
Yes, those are the permanent signs that will go up with all of the park rules.
Oh, okay.
Right, the ones we have, the temporary signs out there right now, it's just a notice of the commercial use prohibition that becomes effective April 1st.
Okay, the one I saw, okay. All right, thank you.
And Mr. Bibber, equally, we appreciate your input and your expertise in helping to be a force and directing us to do the things that need to be done. We recognize your years of service in the park industry, and is very lucky to have you to guide us through this menagerie, which it turned out to be. Thank you, thank you.
It was all meant to happen. It's not totally true.
Easy for you to say.
I'm sure Andrew enjoyed the debate.
Yes.
All right, sir, anyone else in attendance that would like to speak? Ms. Odom, anybody happen to be, do we have anybody hooked up on Zoom at this time?
We have one person hooked on Zoom, but we do not have a hand raised.
Okay, very good. All right. It is now 6:02 PM, and I closed the public hearing held to discuss Ordinance 2022-02 and reopen the March 28th special city council meeting. We are now moving to Agenda Item Number Three.
I think Louise has a comment.
Oh, no, I was just waiting to get to three, to I move Ordinance 2022-02 be read by title only.
Okay, let me just read what it is first. Okay, final reading of Ordinance 2022-02, Blue Run Park Commercial Use Exceptions, and you are making the motion?
I am, thank you.
Okay, and the second?
I would second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
None, here.
No discussion? Ms. Odom? A vote, or you read first?
I need to read it first.
Read it, okay, read it.
Ordinance number ORD 2022-02, an ordinance of the City of Dunellen, Florida, amending Section 46-79 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dunellen, to clarify the prohibition on commercial uses within Blue Run Park, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for conubication, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. That was the rate?
Mayor, that was a motion to read by title only.
To read by title only.
Now you'll need a separate motion to approve.
Right. So now we have another motion? I need a motion for Ordinance 2022-02 to be approved.
So moved.
Ms. Williams, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Cabbage, discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, Ms. Odom, what is left to be done with this?
Nothing.
Where is the confetti and balloons?
I'm not gonna say nothing.
To break a bottle over the sign.
Okay, so as we normally do, we're gonna have an opportunity for any council comments. What isn't on the agenda, I always like to have an opportunity if any of the department heads have something to say, and then we'll get ready to adjourn. So is there anyone on the council that has any updates? Yes.
Yeah, this is an update. Because of the diligence of the city council staff and their volunteer efforts on the weekend, I am sending you all to Belize on a cruise.
Nice.
However, it's not April 1st even, but I do, I do want to tell you that seeing you all there Saturday morning, and even Troy dropping in, donating those big heavy bolts to hold the paperwork down as the wind was blowing, that you guys are just awesome, and I thank you. And you added a lot of joy to the families who visited, their kids had a blast with the dart game. The only suggestion is, instead... The only suggestion is, instead of throwing darts at wildlife, how about next year we make a big poster of invasive species? Throw the darts at the cogan grass and the armored catfish. And I'll help you with that.
Anything else?
That's it.
Ms. Kenny?
No, it's a happy day. It's a happy day, getting some things done, and I too appreciate it and appreciate the work of Mr. Bibber and his expertise, as you mentioned, Mayor. So it's a good day.
Ms. Williams?
I really have nothing. I was excited to attend the reception last Friday night at Howard Academy for the, our Olympian champions, Marion County, Erin Jackson, Brittany Bow, and Joy Mantilla. And then the mayor and I attended the meeting of the Chetman residents last Thursday with FGUA about the moving from septic to sewer, but all that technical stuff I can't tell.
Yeah. Can you give us an update, what was accomplished by the meeting?
What was, what was accomplished? Well, they gave us a timeline. Then they're going to do the work by phases, and then the authorization to go on to the residence properties, they had to sign those again because the first one expired, so. And then there would be another meeting, right, I think. I meant to read over my notes, but I didn't before the meeting, so.
So my, my memory of it was that there were timelines when they were going to do it in sections. It was also noted that if you signed up and allowed FGUA to do the conversion of the septic into the main wastewater, this is part of the project of shutting down the septic tanks in the areas that are polluting the Rainbow River. The residents, if they would sign up in a timely manner, the conversion would be done free of charge, but if they, for whatever reason, decided they didn't want to sign up and wanted to sign up at a later date when FGUA has moved to another section or whatever, you might have to pay a big fee. I remember it was twelve thousand dollars. So they kind of put it out there and asked people to sign up. I thought it was a very good meeting, and we're finding that FGUA has been a good neighbor with us. They seem to be very receptive.
And it was only by the hour, I think.
Right. I've just got a few things to, anything else? Just got a few things to say. We had a ribbon cutting of the tunnel that connects the Danone Trail to the Whittaker Trail a week or so ago. Troy was instrumental in setting up all the equipment that was necessary for that. Chief, even though it was in Citrus County, Chief supplied a lot of the policing over there. I thought that was great. It was well attended. There was a threat of rain, so the ceremony was actually done inside the tunnel, which turned out to be the perfect location.
Yes, it was, it really was.
Perfect. Because while you were sitting there, you could really take it all with him, and it was well attended by commissioners from Marion County, Commissioner from Citrus County, various state representatives. Few people were asked to speak. I was asked to speak on behalf of Danone, and I would have to say, on all the times I've been asked to speak, that was one of my most pleasurable moments. That really felt good doing that. So right now, if you go to Blue Run Park, and Ms. Williams, this is all about you. And you want to go for a hike now? It's nearly fifty miles now, I think it's forty-seven miles.
We'll be going fifty miles. I have walked through the tunnel a couple of times.
So quite incredibly, we have a paved trail from Blue Run Park that goes forty-seven miles.
Day city up there.
That's amazing, yeah. And the plans are to additionally hook it into additional trails in the future where we will be, Danone will be the hub for the Florida Trail System. So, and the thing is, FDOT, who we are at Odswip with the turnpike, Northern Turnpike Extension, they were the, the main force and the, came up with most of the money for the tunnel, so, you know. They, I guess you just have to point them in the right direction. I did follow the consensus of council, where you directed me to write a letter to FDOT requesting a kickoff meeting or an update meeting in Danone or in the general area in Marion County. I wrote it to William Burke, and we did get a response that he would take a look at it and take it to his superiors and see if it could be done. I pointed out to him that Citrus County was given that meeting. I pointed out to him that Levy County was given that meeting, but Marion County, which is actually in the crosshairs more than anybody with these roads, hadn't been given a meeting. And I stress that the distance to these meetings was cumbersome for people to travel to. I also emphasized to him that Marion County has a high percentage of elderly, people that can't necessarily want to drive at night. These meetings went to, into the darkness. I also emphasized to them that counting on people, seniors, to communicate with FDOT via computers, which they've stressed that if you have any questions, just send us an email and read our updates on our website, that that isn't necessarily covering everybody. A lot of people don't have the ability or access to that. So we'll see what happens with that. The great news is that the county has just responded to us this week. I think everyone got the letter, that the county is, has verbally agreed to come up with money for the restroom. The way it is, is they have an original, basically a hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment from years past. They've agreed to come up with an additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand on top of that. The city has committed the original thirty thousand of the agreement we had with the county, and we came up with another twenty-four thousand from the one twenty-five park. On top of that, FGUA has contributed twenty-five thousand, and US Water has contributed twenty-five thousand.
For the Blue Run Park bathrooms?
Yes. And if that ain't enough, I've got one more. The county has also, on top of that, granted, granted us through their programs, I don't understand what program they use, twenty-five thousand dollars toward a weather pavilion. So we got it going. So it kind of falls on Troy. Troy's got to do some homework and find out where the plumbing is, where the plumbing is, and what was put in previously is going to have a lot to do with the expense. The closer the plumbing was put to the proposed site of the restroom will reduce the cost. So we're, we're getting it going. They're, they're planning on, if we can get our homework done, let the county know what bathroom, right now, they're coming up with the, what the county's saying, we're coming up with X amount of dollars. You guys decide with that money what kind of bathroom facility you want. If you want a real, real upscale one, that's up to you. If you want to use the money we have and have what we call a restroom that would be similar to one here or in our earning mills, the amount of money we have right now would probably cover that. So they're basically saying, if, if you guys want a restroom that has the bells and whistles on it, have at it. You just have to come up with the extra money yourself. So we are, it's quite a, it's been an amazing, an amazing week. I want to publicly give two commissioners that really pushed hard to make this happen. One is certainly Kathy Bryant, who represents us in the district, and then Commissioner Carl Zalek has been huge as chairman, current chairman of the Marion County Commissioners to invite me and to allow me to speak to the commissioners and give me pretty much unfretted time to explain my points. And he, he has been amazing. And he's even met with me over coffee one morning to just ask me some questions and try to get more information what this is all about. So it's been a, it's been a great week, and that's my report.
I was just trying to think, is it the county, FGUA, US Water?
Yeah, okay, the way it is right now, new money.
New money.
County's going to come up with two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
FGUA is coming up with twenty-five. US Water's coming up with twenty-five. We have a combination of twelve. We are coming up with about thirty-five, twelve thousand left over plus the twenty-three, right? And the county's coming up with twenty-five thousand for the weather pavilion.
Okay.
And right now, it still hasn't been signed by the governor, but apparently Representative Harding has worked hard and others in the county to include two and a half million dollars in the state budget to start with the bike trail. Pedestrian bridge. So that still has to be signed by the, is that correct, Mandy? So that still has to be signed by the governor. If it stays in the bill, on top of everything else I said, we'll have that project funded, and we'll see how that goes. So Danone is, you knew it five years ago, and what Danone will be five years from now will be a much different place, and hopefully we're showing everybody that we're concerned about the rivers, our ecotourism, and everything's being done in the right way up to this point. So, everybody done?
I just can't believe the traffic in Danone right now. I, I just can't.
I have a question for you.
We, now that we have decided on the police, oh, the Soul Harbor Church sale, we do need to start discussing about a possible location for the proposed police building. So please put that on the workshop, so we can start coming up with some ideas. Anything staff knows or comes up with, including the Masonic property, the property on Powell Road, you know, this is time for staff to do a little homework on behalf of council and give us some suggestions and some ideas. You keep looking at me like, and another thing, and another. Alright, so let's, let's just go down the line and see if, if our department heads have much to say. Georgie, let's start with you for a change. You got anything, anything you want to tell us? What's going on?
The most important thing for me right now is that we, we are finally, we finally have an assistant who is fully trained, and she's working very hard to get everything back up to date, and we're trying to get everything under control again.
Troy?
Nothing to add, your full report.
Okay. Ms. Odom? Want to report on the meeting to Blue Run Park residents? That was a super meeting. The mayor and I did attend after our day over at Marion County Days. We came back that afternoon, had a quarterly meeting with the residents of Blue Run or Blue Cove Division out there. We talked to them about the paving project that's gone out to bid, and the work will start over there. Gave them an update of all the other projects that we're working on around the city. We got to meet the new elected president of the association, all the staff members that, that are on, or all the elected officials on their association, and they're very excited about the changes coming to the city. And they had some amazing food there, so, but it was, it was very good to attend that. Alright, thank you. And Ms. Odom?
Chief, do you have anything?
Well, you want to discuss the meeting?
Sure. The meeting we had last week?
Yes.
Well, I think we should wait till Wednesday when we have our next scheduled meeting. This Wednesday. Well, come on up.
Chief, come on up and.
I was talking about the meeting we have this Wednesday with the mayor.
Right.
But go ahead, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Chief, use your discretion and just, you know, tell us what we need to know.
We had a meeting with Mandy, Jim Coolyard, about Blue Run Park.
And Chief, how did it go?
We discussed mostly how we're going to enforce the rules at Blue Run Park, some of the things that we can and cannot do, and basically between the county, who sent letters out several months ago explaining this was going to probably come about, the letter that Mandy sent out, and this is to all the people who have been issued passes by the county. And I also, with the same list, I called everybody on the list, and nobody basically wanted to attend the meeting, but I did call one person who even the county felt that was going to be a violator and explained to them what would happen, and they politely told me that they had going to sell the business and it'd be up to the new owners to decide what they're going to do. So basically, we are prepared for Monday, for Friday. Of course, Tubman Season doesn't open yet, but that doesn't mean some of these other people who will be trying to violate the new policy on commercials. And Shane and I both have talked with our officers, and we've also talked with the Clerk's Office. They are prepared for the new citations, the Clerk's Office for Marion County. So the police department is ready.
Anything else on normal business you want to talk to us about?
Well, only thing I can say, I can't say much, is we did have a uncommonly young person to die within the city limits, and it is being investigated. But that's about all I can say about that at this time, but very young person, in the forties.
Hey, thank you, thank you. Any questions?
Questions from the council? Come on.
You can't share any information, so just, we got no questions. The questions I want to ask, you can't answer, so.
Ask me something else.
And do your job. I understand.
Yes.
Okay, Chief, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Odom?
Just to add to that, just to let you all know that there is a, a notice on our Facebook page for the police department. We haven't actually gotten our, our city police department Facebook page ready to go yet, but it is on the police department's Facebook page and on the but it is on the police department's Facebook page and on the city's website, Chamber of Commerce website, and we have posted signs. We have six signs posted at the park. A notice effective April 1st, you know, the commercial use prohibition. So I think we've covered as many bases as we possibly can. In addition to that, I reached out to Sean at the Riverland today and asked him if he would write a piece in this week's paper. And I sent him all the information and I shared that with Austin Miller as well, with the O'Callstar banner. So maybe he'll get something in the banner this week to get even more notice out there. So I don't know that we could really, there's much more we could have done.
I saw that on Facebook, police department, so I shared it on my page.
Could you also maybe touch on the Marion County days, the booth and everything we had? What's your impression of that was?
It was amazing. We had everyone at city hall came out to help Troy. We all met up at Public Works about seven o'clock Saturday morning. Went over there to the McPherson complex. We had two tents set up. I had a video presentation that I did, just sort of a running video, some footage that was provided to me by several people, Sandra Marafino, Bill Bibber, Bert O, and Linda Walensky and Gordon Hart, all, all, you know, contributed to that, which was very nice. And our RC also provided us with a lot of pamphlets and educational materials to hand out. We handed out 100 bags with that kind of stuff in it. We had a magnetic dart board with pictures of the Rainbow River and different animal species and had the magnetic darts. And thanks to Troy and Michelle, this thing was just homemade. It was like a piece of a filing cabinet. And with the, the pictures pasted to it and the kids just loved getting throw the darts and pick a prize. We had little goodies for them and so it, we, we stayed, we stayed pretty crowded all day.
Big success.
Saw some pictures.
All right, your report finished? Before we make a motion for adjournment, is anyone else in attendance want to give us some closing comments or anything? Okay. Ms. Odom, no one on Zoom still raising their hand? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
What a great.
Thank you very much.